Naomi, are we ready? Yeah, there we go, we're ready.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order, the Sebastopol Planning Commission meeting of January 26, 2021. First is the call to order and roll call.
Thank you Chair Fernandez, and I'll start with you Chair Fernandez.
Here.
Vice Chair Fitz.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Lindon Bush.
Here.
Commissioner Ottinger. And Commissioner Andre, you're muted just so you know.
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Howden has noted that she will be late in attending. Commissioner Vouch is not here and Commissioner Anderson is not here.
Okay. Let's see, I'm going to go ahead and go with approval of minutes for December 8, 2020. Does anyone have any changes or additions to the minutes? Okay. Alright, so I will ask for a motion for approval.
I move we approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay. Motion and second.
Alright, and I will do a roll vote. Commissioner Ottinger. Commissioner Andre, I don't know if you were muted.
Aye.
She said.
You are not now, thank you. Commissioner Lindon Bush.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Vice Chair Fitz.
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously.
Okay. Moving on to item four, comments from the public on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So, anyone from the public, Carrie, why don't you let them know what they need to do?
Thank you. So, we have not received any email comments for the commission. We do have, it looks like, four official members of the public. So, if you do want to make a public comment for an item not on the agenda, you can either use the chat function to just let us know, or you can go to the reaction button on the bottom of your tab where it says raise hands. Or if you have video, you can unmute your video and just physically wave your hand. Okay, I did not see any indication of anyone wanting to comment on an item not on the agenda, Chair.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment then on that. Any statements of conflict of interest in item number five? Doesn't seem like it, so moving along, we'll move on to item 6A, Development Impact Fee Study. This item is to review the draft development impact fees for the update that is underway, discuss and provide any direction to staff and the consultant, and adopt a resolution recommending the draft fees to the city council. This item was first discussed by the planning commission on August 25, 2020, and Director Swanson.
Thank you Chair Fernandez, and I will just give a brief intro. As Chair Fernandez noted, we did bring this item as a discussion item to the planning commission in August, and that was related to look at what the inputs going into the nexus study would be, the amount of development specifically, and some input on how to account for things like, you know, when someone does a really small unit of housing versus a full-size, single-family house. We got input from that, we've been working with the consultant Harrison Associates, and we have Nick Krall here from Harris, and he will be walking us through the study and the draft, sorry, just through the brief overview. If anyone has any general questions on development impact fees, that was mostly covered at the last meeting. So, he'll be walking us through the draft fees and presenting those to you tonight. Nick, do you want to go ahead?
Yep. Just to make sure, everybody who's on the call right now, you're all at that August meeting if I remember correctly, right? Okay, just making sure, I don't want to have to start from all the way to the beginning and bore you guys with all of the details on what exactly I do for a living. So, if I can avoid that, I'm sure you'll all appreciate it. Okay, so changes since the last, just the last meeting that we had, do recall, we changed the land use assumptions pretty considerably, cutting back some of the areas because we originally worked off of the, assuming the south area of the town would annex in. And upon further discussion, we realized it's probably not very feasible, and some of the other assumptions as far as development were probably higher than is likely in the city over the next five to 10 years, when really the study should be focused on like a 10-year timeline. As a result of that, we did scale back the development assumptions, and then scaled back the projects required to support the development as well. So, there'll be fewer things built, and there'll be fewer, there'll be less overall development plan in the city, which I think is probably likely with what everyone's opinion of what the future of Sebastopol looks like. So, and if you all have the PDF in front of you, you see the items that we had before is the fees, there's the traffic park water and sewer currently existing, and then the affordable housing. And before, we had discussed adding general government fees, fire facilities, stormwater facilities, and administrative costs as well.
Are you talking about page three?
Sorry, I'm on the PDF. Yes, it is page, let me see, yes, page one, and then the overview is kind of on page one into page two.
Nick, do you want me to change to share my screen, or you share your screen so that those in the audience can see if they don't have it downloaded?
Yes, yes, I can absolutely do that, I apologize.
I'll let you share it so you can share at your own pace.
Says I can't share screen. Oh, there it goes, okay, it was just being. Okay, does everybody see a full screen of PDF? Okay, perfect. Alright. So, I apologize, it's going to be slow loading. Alright, so this is the document we discussed. The fees that we're discussing, traffic park, water sewer that currently exists, removal of the wastewater retrofit, annexation, and an update to the affordable housing fee. We had discussed prior, the general government fire facilities. Is the highlight working, or is it just on my side you can see the highlight?
Can, can you make it a little larger?
Yeah, we can see the highlight, but if you could do like fit width or something to your screen, that would be better.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so sharing the actual screen, I thought it was sharing just the file, so I apologize. Normally, it does the full screen, and it's just what I see, that's different. Alright, so we kind of went through it and decided some of these fees were not necessary. We're adding some other fees, and some other items have changed since the last time we discussed. I scrolled farther, sorry, it's a little delayed on my side, so if it's jumpy, I apologize. So, we went through some of the details the last time about addressing stormwater as a cost per impervious square foot as a way to encourage more kind of green use and development, and charging people for the actual impact they're going to have on the stormwater facilities. That's been incorporated into this as well. And then, sorry, I'm trying to scroll. Okay. Here are the comparison of fees for everyone who doesn't have their own copy printed out. Single-family fees, you can see a lot of the fees are going up, pretty much all of them, but the sewer fee are going up as a result of mostly the, you know, costs have gone up for most of these items across the board. The park fee before, we, you know, $6,500 is really just not sufficient to really fund any park facilities. And this is based on updated land costs, updated park development costs. Traffic costs are essentially doubling as well as traffic facilities. I apologize, I think you can hear my kids screaming in the background. Sorry. So, if anyone can see, the single-family fees, the multifamily fees, they're all pretty much going up across the board, except for the sewer fees, because as Sebastopol uses sewer as a growth development cap, there's not a lot of facilities being constructed, so there's not a need for any new development there. Water fees are going up essentially doubling, and traffic fees are essentially doubling. And then the stormwater facilities didn't exist before, and now this is an estimate based on the square footage and typical lot coverage you're going to see on a single-family unit. So, overall, the fee burden is going from, you know, $32,000 unit to about $45,000 unit for something. Which, if you guys want to take a quick look, the next page shows a comparison with some of the local market. You can see it across the board, it's pretty much the same as far as how the fees are going up. Sorry, I'm trying to jump pages, it's taking a little while. I know another one that's pertinent to the city of Sebastopol, you can see hotel comparisons. The park fee is going up, you know, not as much as everybody else, and then the traffic impact fee is going up pretty considerably. And I can explain why, if anyone has any specific questions on that, or we can do it at the end.
We can, if anybody's got questions, as he's showing these, that probably be more pertinent.
I have no problem jumping back to.
That's fine.
Okay, and then we had discussed scaling the fees based on essentially offering a discount from the city to build units that are smaller than average. Before the discount was set at a 1,500 square foot mark, upon some research, we discovered the median house size of new homes in Sebastopol is about 1,750 square feet for a single-family unit. So, we're recommending moving up the kind of small house threshold from 1,500 to 1,700 square feet. So, it would further incentivize units being built below 1,500 square feet, but I'll still offer some discounts, so it doesn't encourage, you know, if someone's going to build a 1,600 square foot house, they just as well build a 2,000 square foot house before. This would hopefully create kind of a science cap there as well to continue with kind of the green and efficient building goals of the city. And then other ones, here's the comparison, and this is probably the biggest thing everyone was concerned about, is what our draft fees look like compared to some of your neighboring cities. Is this visible? I can zoom in a little more, I know these things are super hard to read.
If you can zoom in a little bit, that'd be, that'd be great, thanks Nick.
Okay. See if I can scroll to fit the whole thing in, does that fit on everybody's screen? Okay.
Yes.
You can see across the board, you can look at, you know, Catari, Rona Park, some of the pretty comparable cities to you guys, and then Santa Rosa is of course something we have to look at just because they are kind of a big city area. And we're pretty close to the average. We're going to be a little bit higher than kind of the average market, the 41,000, because these fees are brand-new, and not everybody. Fees, and even if they put on the annual inflation factor that not every, every city does. You see, we're just a little bit above average, which is pretty common for a, for a new newly updated fee program. We did include some other items before, we didn't have the admin general government fee, or the other cities called admin, we call it general government. And we're adding a storm drainage fee and a fire facilities fee, and a, and and then with a lower, with a lower sewer fee, we still are pretty much right in the ballpark of what anyone else is charging as a total all-in cost, which is, as we discussed before, can be a determinant whether or not new development comes in, because if you guys have the exact same product available in two neighboring cities, but your fees are quite a bit higher than the other city, that could cut directly into what developer sees as incentivizing the project. So, we don't want to be too much higher than the neighbors, but there's nothing wrong with us, we're kind of all in the ballpark. Anyone have any questions on this one specifically?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
My question is, I'm looking at Hillsburg, and they're probably lower than average. And I'm wondering when the last time they updated their fees, is that, are we average because we're just updating our fees now, or because other people haven't? I mean, where do we fall in that?
Both. If I remember right, and don't quote me on this one exactly, I believe Healdsburg's study was 10 years or more older, which is not uncommon for these studies to be over 10 years old, that's extremely common. And I believe they haven't updated in a very long time. I'd have to pull it again to look, and I could have looked before, I just didn't think about it. But yeah, we are, we are going to be a little bit higher because we are a brand-newly updated study.
And Kathy, one of the other dynamics that I know Healdsburg is different from a lot of the other cities is that they get an enormous amount of funding from TOT taxes. Like, for instance, and this isn't related to development impact fees, but their entire parks department is funded through TOT, so they don't have any general plan funding for that. So, I don't know how that plays into their, you know, how they use the TOTS and other areas of their budget, but I do know that that is, there's sort of an outlier in that, in that regard, where they have a lot of TOTS to support a lot of the things the city does.
And if you look at our park fee as a comparison, our park fee is, you know, $10,000 higher than theirs. So, if they're using their TOT to fund parks, that would explain that massive gap and why the park funding is so different. Because now like land costs is cheaper in Healdsburg, they find out their funding sources.
Is there a reason why, if I can just jump in, why the, the water fee is relatively high in comparison?
I can actually show you a full list of all the facilities planned, if you guys are interested in those. We went through it with Public Works and all the details. One of the big items is there's, well, I can show you when we actually jump into the, to those Excel documents, if you guys want to see those. So, I can, I believe I have to change, hold on, let me change my share screen quickly. Alright, is everybody seeing a Excel document that's probably?
Very tiny.
Yeah, we are, but zoom in if you can, perfect.
Alright, is that?
That's good.
Okay. So, you can see with the project costs coming up, the project costs in general, there's just a lot of expensive projects coming up, $12 million in, in projects for a city or size is quite a bit. The largest ones being a well improvement, and then this water main loop, which upon discussion with Public Works, there's a, all the water comes in in one point in the city, and there's not actually a loop for pressure. And the way it was described to me, and I'm not an engineer, so don't quote me on this one, but if the wrong fire hydrant gets hit, no one has water. So, the three and a half million of the 12 and a half million dollars in projects total will help everybody have more consistent water pressure, overall better for the city, more reliable, you know, all the things that everybody expects out of their water system.
And I think, Nick, that's why that particular project, so a lot of the projects, as we learned in August, the development impact fees can't be used for maintaining or replacing with existing. They can only be for increasing capacity. And so, you see, particularly in this list, you see a lot of replacing a small pipe with a larger pipe that's needed, increasing the main sizes, those types of things. The, the water main loop, that is part of supporting additional development, but it's only allocated at 50% to new development because the other portion of it is to support the improved conditions for the existing development in town. And so, Nick's gone through with each of the development department heads to look at, well, what is this for? Is this for, just for, you know, we wouldn't be doing this if it wasn't for new development, or is this something that, and we've thrown out stuff that's just maintenance to really understand what's fully for new development, what is proportionally for new development.
Right, so like the well number four upgrade, where it says replacing well for additional capacity, that item would probably need to be serviced and maintained anyway. While we're in there upgrading it, we can upgrade it and get more water out of the same well, which is why 50% of the cost can be allocated in new development, 50% to the existing city.
So, I have a question kind of related to that, and like those items down at the bottom part of the, the screen, that sound like the very specific neighborhoods, yeah. So, like the Pleasant Hill condos, that sounds like a very specific, you know, project for a very specific development. So, how does that, how does new development that has nothing to do with the Pleasant Hill condos end up paying for an improvement at the Pleasant Hill condos?
That's kind of just what the naming convention of the project is. The, the main point of this is actually more to dial back, and so when Public Works looks at this in three years, and let's say no one in the Public Works Department is still there, they can go Pleasant Hill condos, what is that project? And they look up, and they go, oh, Pleasant Hill condos is this exact water main from this space to this space, and all of the technical details, and like the CIP always shows where it's all of the exact details. This is more just to make it, you know, easier for us to understand. So, this, I believe, and I'm not 100% on this, because again, I don't, I don't have all the specific engineering schematics, that's improving the water main that runs along the Pleasant Hill condos water line.
Got it.
Yeah, but.
That's just more of a, it's a naming convention.
But Vice Chair Fitz, I do, I take that comment as really good input that we may want to modify the names of some of these, so it doesn't sound like it's just for one project. That is probably, you know, staff, we have sort of shorthands for the, you know, the water main that goes through this property or something like that.
Yeah. Jumped out to me is like, why are we fixing like their water main issue?
Yeah, no.
We can change, we'll change the name to the, we'll change the name to the name of the actual street that it is, because I don't know what the name of the street is.
It's just Pleasant Hill, so it shouldn't be hard.
Yeah.
Oh, it's Pleasant Hill, is it Pleasant Hill, right?
Yeah. That's Pleasant Hill Avenue.
Can I jump in a second? Hello?
Yes, please.
Outside its road, I think.
So, this is a question for, for Nick. I see that in the graphs, the sewer is broke out separately under, you know, dwelling units, but not for commercial office or motel, is, why is that?
So, with non-residential development, it's based on the water meter in size. So, because residential development pretty much all uses the same water meter, we can make the estimate of what the average water meter going in and the average sewer line going out is going to look like for residential development. For stuff that's larger, for instance, if you're putting in a brewery that's running an eight-inch water line in, they're going to dump a lot of water in the sewer system. So, the sewer, the sewer charges are run proportionately to the water meter size, which can vary based on what you plan on putting in. So, while, you know, a small retail shop might have a standard water line running into it, that's a three-quarter inch or maybe even a one-inch. Something that's a large restaurant might have a two-inch and a half or two-inch water line, depending on the size, it would have a completely different water demand. If you have your, I don't know if you're on the screen check, I see you're on the phone, but sorry, here, the sewer fees are actually based on meter size.
Okay.
So, based on the, based on the water demand and the gallons per minute flow capacity is how this works.
So, I, I don't understand if it's a, if it's a fee for proposed, you know, construction, then why isn't it broke out as well for the commercial office and motel, or hotel?
You mean in the comparison chart in the PDF?
It, it must be accounted for someplace, I imagine, because everyone pays their fair share for sewer.
Yeah, so I think, Linda, we didn't do comparison charts. Oh, you're asking why the sewer isn't included in the charts?
In that PDF.
The commercial and office charts.
Right. So, here's the water comparisons, if you, if you want to see the side-by-side comparisons of where the service charges are going. Those are, those weren't broken out, because they're a specific item. We didn't fill it, it was, yeah, because it is, it can be kind of confusing if you're looking at it. We didn't want, you know, someone looking at a residential fee to say, okay, I have a water fee over here, that's $10,000, and then you look over here and they see another $10,000 fee. We didn't want it to look like we're charging $20,000 for water.
But Nick, maybe what we may want to do in the charts for say, commercial and office is put in the line for sewer and water, and just instead of putting in a number, just putting based on meter size. So that, so that if someone's looking at doing a retail store and they look at this chart, they know that there is a fee, they just, they can, they have to reference the other table. They don't think, otherwise they might think, oh, there is no water or sewer fee for a commercial rate.
No, in, in the Nexus study, it's spelled out differently. These, these comparison charts are mostly just for our purposes here today. Just to make it so everyone can see it today, the Nexus study doesn't, won't have these comparison charts in there, because that's not how they're, that's not a standard item that's offered.
Okay.
See, the actual published, yeah, the actual published document won't have these exact tables in there, and it looks, it looks slightly different in the way that the total fee summary is done.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the city comparison chart, if you can go back to that.
Um, I, I can, I'll have to jump share screen again, hold on one second. Are we back on the PDF?
There you go, okay. So, in doing the, the different comparisons, I noticed that some of the cities, say for, for traffic, storm drains, et cetera, is included in the admin cost. So, that kind of throws things a little bit of a skew as far as really comparing, say, admin, because the admin for say, Santa Rosa includes traffic and storm drainage, and in Rona Park includes quite a few other things on there. So, looking at those numbers in comparison may not really be an accurate present, you know, representation.
Yeah, it is, the way Rona Park especially does their fees, it's kind of, they, they just make a single fee for, if you're doing a single-family, it is this amount of, this amount. And that's just the kind of discussion, and then there's a plan area fee based on the specific area of town you build in. They tried to make it as easy as possible for a developer coming in by making it just a, here's your single-family impact fee, which makes it easy to read, but also difficult to read for our specific circumstances we're in today. If you look at, if you kind of just go off of the total at the end, it makes, it does make it make a little more sense, but the fact that their general government fee comes to, you know, $28,000 makes ours look really, really cheap, when in reality, it's, at the end of the day, we're all charging, you know, $40,000, $45,000 bucks.
Okay.
It is a little misleading, are you right? Were there any other questions?
I'm wondering if you could, I'm just curious, do you have the, the traffic impact projects, the proposed project? I'd be curious to see what those are.
Sure, we can look at all those. And I'm jumping back to share Excel. We're back on Excel?
Yep.
Okay. And watch me zoom, so you can all actually read it. Are we zoomed in enough?
Yeah.
Okay. So, here's the project, you can see quite a bit of it is the 116 route about our signal estimates, and then some other improved pedestrian improvements. Then the one we put in here, we put in a couple of placeholders, because we do know down the road we're going to need them, we just don't know the timing on these general plan projects for Willow and Abbott. We don't have a specific timeline on them, so they didn't get included as costs. But if we do an update in a couple of years, because, you know, no one knows what the future is going to look like with development right now. If there is more development that we think, and we find that there's a need, we can do an update to these and include those costs into this, if that, you know, becomes something that's necessary in the near future.
And that's similar to how we handle, you know, what we got from the commission at the last meeting was, yeah, we're probably not going to get to the infrastructure of any annexation outside of town. We know the South Grabenstein, sorry, South Grabenstein Highway area really needs to have a, an infrastructure study done, because we know that, you know, basically, the, for the sewer is the big challenge frankly, because it's downhill from the, the one pipe we have going on the highway 12-bit bridge. So, the infrastructure to get it up there is a pretty big lift, literally, against gravity, including a lift station, but we don't know what exactly that would look like. We haven't done the planning for that, but we also, with the development scenario that we talked about in August, that's not likely to happen in the next five years before we update the study. So, we simply left all of the sphere of influence development out of this study, and therefore, we also left those projects out of the study. And this is kind of the same thing, the Willow Street is, you know, that, that's an extension from Main Street to Pedalooine Avenue that would go through, through the parking lots in that area. Potentially require a right-of-way acquisition, but with the amount of commercial and office development assumptions that were reduced in August because of the economic outlook, you know, unless there's significant downtown development to support that type of a project or the need for that type of a project, we said, okay, let's, let's not, let's keep it as a placeholder, so we know in our mind that that's a project when development intensifies on the commercial, commercial front.
And this kind of related to that, that Abbott Avenue extension kind of makes me think, wonder if that should be kind of looked at again, just because my recollection of that extension was that it's going to go, it would have gone through what is now the Davis Town Homes. So, I think it was supposed to connect over to the intersection of Murphy, which seems less likely that that would happen now that the Davis Town Homes are under construction.
Yeah, and I can actually address that, because I've had several conversations recently, and this was, you're correct, and staff's assumptions that that might be, that might be a dead project. However, there is, and I'll report it on the Benedetti Car Wash later, but one of the things that came up in council was during the hearing about was the desire to have at least a portion of Abbott Avenue extended to support potential redevelopment of the Ford, you know, the Benedetti site obviously is happening. The, there's a vacant manufacturing lot south of there, and then next to the, just east of Benedetti is the Ford building. I see Huck is actually on this call, he's the owner, so he might have something to say. But to be able to access that, and then of course, it's Sebastopol in. But to be able to access that, and then of course, the subascool inn adjoining that is now going to be residential. And so having the, you know, that's changing to where at least pedestrian bicycle access to the back of that. The road may not go all the way through, the road would probably go through to, to somewhere in the Ford property. And then whether it would go through to Subascool or have some sort of turnaround. We did in the last couple of weeks, a few weeks, and, you know, Nick was gracious enough when I threw this at him and said, hey, wait a second, I want to make sure we get this cost into the, into the study because it could actually happen sooner rather than later, given the development. Especially the, the, you know, the connection up to the trail in that area, bicycle and pedestrian, and even if it's not the full roadway portion of it. And so this is, there's a certain amount allocated to the, and I think, Nick, I think we actually have that, that's 153,000 allocated to that. I think it's just the online item because it's all blank.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
So, so we do have a portion of that allocated to the development impact fee study to support that project.
Yeah, I think that's just a typo on my part, I apologize, everyone.
And then I know we talked a little bit about this last time, the idea of the vehicle miles travel. And I know that there's some bigger, the county's doing a study and I can't remember exactly, we were doing a study feedback on that, or there was, I just wondered what the update is on the vehicle miles travel analysis.
So that is something that's still pending. We, like most other smaller communities, and there's still frankly only a few, a handful that have adopted actual BMTs. What Snowma County has done and is, I believe it's completed now, is a travel model that looked at and got us to the, what are the vehicle mile averages throughout? So we do have that metric. We will use, we'll be using that as we evaluate projects. So you have to, the vehicle mile travel regulations require you to analyze a project in comparison and be better than the average for your town. And so we know what those numbers are now because of this S C T A travel model that was done. And so we have that for evaluating in the mean, in the interim.
Any other questions at, at the moment? I'm going to open up for public comment and then we can come back if other questions come up.
I do have one other question. I know, I know since we had this presentation in August, then we had the subsequent presentation on the arena numbers. And I know we kind of talked about development and with the likelihood of development. I'm just wondering, does the, does the arena allocations have to, you know, impact this in any way? Or is that kind of a separate issue? And our arena numbers are going up, but we kind of dial the residential.
Right, we, yeah, and thank you Chair Fritz, you're right. And that, we do want to make sure what we're assuming versus what the arena number is are in relatively the same ballpark. I think we're there now, and I, I can't recall, I think we might have adjusted one of the numbers by about 25, upwards of 25 minutes or so. I don't know if Nick has that at his fingertips or not right now.
I do.
Excellent. So he's going to pull up the, the assumptions. It's, it's fairly similar to what we were looking at before. And so it's, it's within both our gross ordinance, or, or, sorry, our growth management ordinance. We have reduced it down on the commissions. And also, you know, these, this number reflects the number of, this, this reflects all, including ADUs as well, I think. Or, or did we take out the ADUs? Okay, so this is not, this is, this is assumptions for projects that would, would, in that fee would, yeah, that would pay the fee. And so there's a small portion of ADUs. I know we just, actually, I just calculated the fees like a month ago for an ADU that was larger than some 50 square feet. And so it basically ends up getting the impact to be similar to a small housing unit.
Thanks.
But just, and just to note, the single family, we consider single family attached, like the Barlow Crossing Townhomes, the Davis Townhomes, those are considered in the single-family category, not the multifamily. So if you think that number, so it's not just, you know, detached, single-family homes and that number.
Before we go to, I got, I got another, actually, another question. So on page two, you refer to the different fees, you know, general government, fire facilities, stormwater administration costs. I didn't see anything with, for the administration cost on there, which says it's for staff and consulting costs. Was, is that part of general government or am I missing that?
Nick, do you want me to take this one?
Go for it.
Okay, so there are actually a couple of fees, additional fees that we could have charged. One was a library impact fee. And the other is this, you can charge for, you know, the cost for the study and staff's cost for administering. I believe it's up to 5%, Nick? Yeah, 5%. When we looked at that, that was actually, so two things. One, the library was a very, very small amount compared to what it would take to do a new library. Libraries generally get done on a much larger, like a general obligation bond scale. And so getting over the fees we're wanting to, as Nick said, would be in the neighborhood of all your neighbors so that you're not, you know, if we had an $80,000 fee, then everyone would choose to build their housing in, in Santa Rosa or Aurora Park or somewhere, somewhere else. So, so there is a balancing act for that. And then for the administrative costs, we, we felt that was kind of push it up. You know, I think it pushed it up, I don't recall how much, if we did the full 5%. We could obviously do 1% or 2%, but we did want to include it in the study because it's something that, you know, this is a significant step for single family and for a lot of the commercial development. We don't want to increase it anymore at this step, but as we update any resolutions and ordinances, we want to make sure that it is there. So potential to do in the future, should the city want to.
Okay. And general government, are there projects that are in mind? Or that, or is that for maintenance or what's the idea behind that?
So it's not for maintenance?
Exactly, I was going to say, AB 1600 cannot be used for any maintenance, any, any existing deficiencies and like that. So if you currently need, you know, if you currently need new public works, you know, trucks or something like that, you can use it for the current need, future needs only. So right now, it's being done on what's considered, what's called a level of service standard. So we took, I can actually show you the math if you, if everyone's curious. We took the existing value, this will all be in the actual Nexus study as well. So there's, you know, nothing secret here, of course. You can see, we took the current value of City Hall, the Corpiere, Senior Center, Police Station, all that type of things, all the vehicles are included. We took that divided by the current people being served, not just residents, but employees as well, to come to a cost per person. And that money doesn't have a specific spending plan right now, but it is going to be, it can be used for things to become identified projects as part of the traditional funding.
Yeah, and Chair Fernandez, there's, you know, I think there is a, even though we don't have specific solutions, yet we don't have any facility master plan. I think there is a recognized need for, as communities grow, you know, if staff grows, the fire department just added a fire, you know, a full-time engineer, doesn't have an office, or, you know, and I know, having seen them in action during the evacuations last year, you know, they're, they're pretty cramped in there when they have their volunteer fire force sleeping and things like that. The, you know, the youth center, I think we've all been in, even a planning commission meeting where the room is packed and there's not enough room for the public. And so those are the types of things that, you know, laundry and just, you're, you're looking at facilities, expansions or relocations and things like that, this would be used for.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing further, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. So, Carrie, go ahead.
Sure. And so we do have four members of the public. I don't have picked a video for any of them. So again, if you can use either the chat window, the reactions button to raise your hand, or if you have video and unmute. And I'm actually just going to click ask to unmute for all of you in case you need to know where that button is. If you're interested in public comment, please, go ahead. Okay, I am seeing none. But I do want to note, Chair Fernandez, I did get one question from Piazza Hospitality. Ask, oh, when I, I see a hand, so we'll get to you in a second. I did get one, a question from Piazza Hospitality about if this would impact the hotel subascool fees. And they do have a fee agreement with the city that has locked in their fees, so they would not be impacted by this.
Okay.
And Kian, did you have a question, comment?
Yeah, just a quick question. I was curious, the definition, it has single family and multifamily. And multifamily has condos and apartments, and single family has attached and detached. I was just curious where townhomes would fall in, in that definition. That single family attached, that'd be condos, I guess, is it by square footage?
So a town home where they have their own, their own connections. Usually they don't have a shared sewer wall, sewer, you know, they all have separate meters and things like that. Whereas condos often have, the building has one water main, that type of thing. So we consider townhomes to be single family, single family attached.
Okay.
A condo would be considered multifamily.
Thank you.
And that, and that's really related to the, as you can kind of see from some of the instructions, the, the usual size of the unit and also how the utilities end up getting structured for those.
And is that the only one you're showing?
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, I believe that is it.
Okay. So I'll close public comment, bring it back to commission. And what is the plan as far as for city council, when this would go to them? And I'm assuming to open it for public comment and then a single meeting approval? Or how do you see this working out?
So we have, so once the planning commission has reviewed this and if you sign off on this tonight by adopting the resolution, we will go ahead and get it scheduled for council. The, the council agendas are in a bit of flux right now because they're trying to balance a lot of different things. It would likely be a March meeting. And we'll either do it as a study session and a hearing, but it may be that we just do it all in one and have the public hearing, you know, after the study session. I know Harrison is, it's usually does that in two meetings, but if, if there's a, yeah, you guys could do it all along, it's easy, no-brainer. Feedback from the commission, I don't want to scare Nick. Take his advice as well.
Yeah, we can typically do it in one go-round, as far as, you know, opening a public comment, allowing city council comment. By that point, the actual study is completed and they're going to be viewing the final document. And then if everything goes kind of as planned, you're going to have, and then after that, there's a second meeting for the actual adoption because the fees take two readings to get them through. And then after that, fees go into effect 60 days after the second city council meeting.
Right. And as most of you might be familiar with, from zoning ordinances and whatnot, the first reading is usually, is where the public comment comes. And usually our second readings are on consent because they've incorporated all the changes that council wants at that point.
So wondering if any, are there any other questions from commission? If not, entertain a motion for approval and we can still have discussion after that. Anyone wants to make a motion, unless they have questions.
I just want to say, I appreciate the inclusion of the, you know, the discounts for the smaller units. And I think that's, I think it's a good thing. I'm hoping that encourages people to build more efficient, smaller, smaller units. So I, I think that's a good thing to include. I did have some concerns about us being one of the highest in the county. But, you know, given your explanation, I think, you know, I see why, why that is since we're kind of just adopting, we're going to be kind of towards the high end. But, so yeah, I don't have any other concerns, I don't think.
Yeah, Mr. Fritz, that, sorry.
I was going to say, if we took out Healdsburg from that comparison, realistically, we'd probably be right about market. They're just kind of below market, which kind of skews all things when I'm looking at, what, five cities, six cities? So if you have one of them that's half of everybody else's fee, it's going to make everybody look expensive.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah, and I think that comparison chart, Chair, Vice Chair Fritz is why we said, hey, let's, let's not include the administrative costs at this point. It's already going to be a jump. And, and it's always nice to face fees in, you know, if you can, in that way. And since this is sort of a big needed, but a significant course correction, we didn't want to make it too long this.
Yeah, it's a big increase for that, all at once.
And I did want to note, I don't know if you guys all caught this, but this is sort of one of these administrative headaches things. The, for the, the fees for the small home, smaller homes, well, a couple of points that, just to reiterate on this. If, if someone does come in, let's say, a thousand square foot home, we're, we're looking at getting online permitting. So we would be able to track if that person has gotten a discount. Because what Nick was actually kept reminding me, which I wasn't really thinking of previously, was, you know, the, the discount when you're doing a project needs to be made up from somewhere else. So it ends up being made up from the general plan. And so there's, there's definitely a sense of, you know, both council and the commission want to smart, support the smaller, more affordable by-design homes, not the big mega mansions. I think this, where we're ending up with this at 1750 square feet below that, you get a discount, really supports that. But we would be tracking so that if someone comes back in and does another thousand square foot addition, they would have to make up that impact fee for the expansion of that home to be that, the full fee of whatever, whatever the impact fee is at that time for the, you know, the per square foot kind of discount. And that's, I think it's actually fair, and it's actually, if you think about the helpful, if someone's coming in there and doing a smaller home, but then they want to expand for the family, it kind of helps them grow the home over time, too.
Yeah, I think that's.
And then the other thing, because this is a little unusual, the one fee that, so, so that would impact an existing home in the future. The other, and, and right now, none of our development impact is, impact existing homes of any sort or commercial development unless they're doing a change of use from one category to another. The other fee that would impact existing development is the stormwater facility fee. And the, because that's being charged on used square foot of impervious surface. And I do want to be clear, we're not going to go around and be the driveway police and if someone puts a new walkway in, you know, that's not how we would manage this. We would administer this based on if someone came in for something that required a building permit. So a swimming pool, significant impervious surface, or a large addition or addition. The one thing that I was curious to hear from this commission is of whether there was a threshold below which it wouldn't, it doesn't make sense to you. So like someone does 100 square foot addition to bump out their utility room or something, or, you know, whenever, create an atrium, who knows what it is? Is there a certain square footage below which you, we should just not bother?
Would it be a percentage?
That seems like, it seems like that does make some sense. And maybe it's a, I don't know exactly what it should be, but maybe, yeah, some percent of the, you know, if you, if you're currently covering 25% of your lot and you're going to, in the end, cover 27% of your lot, that's probably fine. But if you're going from 25% to 40% coverage, like that's a significant change. Like, I don't know exactly what the right number is, but it seems like there should be some kind of.
Yeah, I will say, it will be far easier to do this on a threshold square footage. Like, for instance, school facilities, I think the school fee, they don't charge for less than, they don't charge the school fees on less than either 250 square feet or 500 square feet or something like that. You know, I think that the, I don't think it should be 500 square feet because that's a significant amount of impervious surface. You know, that's a whole swimming pool, basically. But, so as, I will say, it's going to drive staff, probably drive staff crazy to try to calculate. The, the average homeowner has no idea how much, how to calculate or draw even what their impervious existing surface is. So I would say for administration purposes, if we could go with a square feet, below which, we're not going to worry about it, that would be fine.
Is, is there some, like, what do other cities typically? Is there, um, like, what do other cities typically do for something like this? Is there kind of a standard approach to that, or?
Most cities don't do it on a per square foot basis, as a general whole. What I would personally suggest, just off of having done construction in my past, if for, I think the city that cut off for like a shed, if it's a hundred, under a hundred and twenty square feet, they don't need a permit, over one twenty they do. You can be in that one twenty, one fifty square foot range before it makes a raises a flag at a dollar forty a square foot, you know, call it a buck and a half a square foot, you know, you're going to get them for a hundred and eighty bucks on storm drainage fees for a, you know, for a shed over a hundred and twenty square feet. You're not going to necessarily raise any, you know, massive headaches, but I'm sure you'll get a couple complaints at the counter. But if you make it, you know, two hundred square feet even, you're really going to be exempting most things, like I'm putting an awning on, or I'm adding with a patio, they wouldn't pull a permit for three-satting concrete. And for a shed, you're not going to really get it. It's mostly for home additions, because no one's going to do an addition for a hundred square feet, for the most part. They might be closing in a breezeway if their garage doesn't connect, but yeah, it's probably not that big a difference overall. So, you know, anywhere in that sub two hundred, maybe two fifty, if you really wanted to make it, you know, not owners on staff, you're probably honestly not talking about a massive amount of money at the end of the day. It's more about, you know, doing it to try and encourage people not to put huge, huge, you know, lock covers on there, you know, you don't want someone putting in a swimming pool and a huge deck and a you know, pool house and all sorts of things, and all of a sudden their entire lot's concrete. That's really what you're trying to avoid. It's not so much you're trying to, you know, collect every dime you can. At least that's just, that's just my opinion from from my years.
Yeah, and a hundred and twenty square feet or or less is that does, yeah, shed doesn't require a building permit if it's also a hundred and twenty square feet. So we're not going to see those anyway, unless they're adding electrical, but I think that, you know, if you have a light in your shed versus not, I think it's sort of the same, pretty minimal impact, so if I were to pick a number, I think I like the hundred and fifty square feet. It's a little bit above that, or two hundred, but it's the commissioners have other thoughts on that? I would like to get something in there, just so that if there's someone does come in for a really minor addition, or something that requires a permit, that it's just an easy no brainer for the building department to say, yeah, you're fine, don't worry about it, or, yeah, no, we need to crack this, because it's three hundred square feet.
So what what can you do, and maybe Vice Chair Fritz can answer us, what can you do with a hundred and fifty feet? Like, what what kinds of?
And that's a, that can be a bedroom.
Okay.
You know, if you're just adding a bedroom, that's even a hundred for one bedroom.
Yeah, it's a ten by thirteen plus exterior wall room, basically. You could do a, probably a hot tub, in-ground hot tub, but you couldn't do a swimming pool. They're usually going to be larger than that.
I had another question, if if there's no further discussion on that. I'm just wondering, just sort of what the the decision calculus was for having a cutoff at all of seventeen fifty or fifteen hundred? Or if there was any discussion on just doing, you know, just kind of cost per square feet basis?
I can take that one. So the the reasoning being with not just making it a pure square footage basis, you need to have some kind of denominator to make make the division work. So you have to have a meeting to start with anyway. And the other one is we need to have a, what the rational nexus is one of the things defined by AB sixteen hundred, saying you have to be able to tie the impact of a facility or the impact of new development to a facility cost. So if someone puts on, you know, a new living room on the front of their house that has no bedrooms, no bathrooms, you can say, yes, that one hundred percent changes are storm drainage, you can make that rational nexus connection. If they're just adding a living room with no bedrooms, no bathrooms, they're probably not going to use any more sewer, any more water, or any more traffic. So without doing, you can't really tie it directly to just the size of the house. Some cities, like in Vacaville, they charge you your water fees based on the number of faucets you have in your house. It's common down in Monterey County, too. You can make that connection. You can't just say, you know, making a bigger bedroom or a bigger living room increases park fees. You know, it doesn't, because we make park fees generated based on the number of people, because the city has a number of park acres per thousand populations. That answer your question?
Kind of. So I understand the basis for coming to the average per square foot, and if the median house size is seventeen fifty, that makes sense. I'm just asking if it would be the same impact fee if a new home, new construction were eighteen hundred square feet versus thirty eight hundred square feet?
Yep, except for the drainage fee, it'd be the same, or if they had a larger water meter, because they're, you know, who knows? They probably use the same size water meter, but if they did upsize their water meter, it'd be an additional charge as well. But they'd be charged on the actual impacts, and then anything over seventeen, if it's, you know, seventeen hundred or two hundred or thirty seven hundred square feet, it's the same.
Okay. And is it, because are there examples in other cities where they do just use a square foot basis, but still, as you mentioned, going back to that basis drawn from the median square footage size?
There's a lot of cities that really want to, and we get asked that almost every single time we adopt one of these studies. Somebody will eventually probably do that, and more than likely, the developers are going to take, the BIA is either going to fight it tooth and nail, or fight, see him in court over it. Because you just don't have that that tie that anyone's been able to establish for, you know, do you use more roads because your house is bigger?
Gotcha.
And 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 actually, we we did a lot of research on this over the last couple of years, because this has been such a commonly asked for thing. We actually find it's usually the inverse, the larger the home, the fewer people live in it. Because most people build bigger homes when they're older, and their kids are grown, and they're moved out, and they, you know, for some reason move into the giant house when their kids are all out of high school. I know my parents did it.
Right, okay.
Yeah, you know, I I understand why, you know, this is needs to be done, and and you know, I mean, I support it. Just my my concern is just all these fees, I mean, they've worked their their way out to cost of living at some point, because all these are going to be passed on, and it just makes the area more expensive and excludes more people that can live in the area. But, you know, I understand why they're there and some of the needs for the community, but I'm always always concerned me at the unintended consequences that, you know, little by little, it just adds more and more cost of living to everybody, so, but.
One thing, I know I can help with that quite a bit, because I, my, in a former life, I was actually, I did pro formas and due diligence for developers around Northern California. Normally, the way like a subdivision is done is they take the end sales price of the house, subtract out the cost of getting those houses built, the cost of all the fees and entitlements and roads and power lines and everything else it takes to get development off the ground, and what's left over is what the land is worth. So essentially, by passing something like this, what you really do is not necessarily increase the cost of housing, because the cost of the houses is based on what people are willing to pay in the area. It's, you've just lowered the cost of raw land. So it's a, it's a weird way to think about it, that it's not really you're increasing the price of, I mean, you are effectively over the long term, going to increase house a little bit, but I believe, Mr. Fritz, aren't you an architect? So, you know, if you're talking the median house price is seventeen, or the median house is seventeen hundred square feet, times a construction cost of three hundred bucks?
I'm telling people three fifty and four hundred right now.
So if you're saying four hundred by a two thousand square foot house, it's eight hundred grand. We're talking about increasing fees fifteen thousand dollars on eight hundred thousand in construction plus land cost. At the end of the day, we're inching close to a million bucks. I don't think fifteen grand is really what's going to make or break a development going off, you know, a house getting built or not.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that I would say, Chair Fernandez, because I think, you know, Nick and I, as as we've been working together, certainly have that, you know, where are we, what are, you know, obviously, this costs everybody. I sort of look at what the fees are, and so the park fees are going up significantly. And we know we have a lot of park needs, and so we can't be, you know, we have the acquisition of new development of parks to support folks like the River Forest, which was recently purchased, but we haven't been able to do anything with it, so people can't use it. And the traffic impact fee is the other one that's going up, and I will say, and as you probably all know from hearing about projects, traffic is probably the biggest impact that people in the community are concerned about, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that a lot of our infrastructure, you know, is it's it's getting more crowded, and there is a capacity issue, certainly, if not overall, on times of day. And we know that's not going to get better in the in the future, right? So so there is a need to improve capacity, and, you know, an intersection may not be more lanes on the road, but it's a controlled intersection helps you adjust the flow to get more people through town more smoothly and those types of things. And so, you know, those are two things, the two of the of the of the issues that are fees that are going up more than some of the others. The other thing that I did find, and this was sort of a natural thing that came out of the study, I was somewhat surprised at, but the multifamily development is is not going up significantly. It's going up two or three thousand dollars, or two thousand dollars. And so there is a, you know, yeah, maybe that's the Vice Chair Fritz, you don't, you're not a huge single family zoning, I know. So, you know, maybe that is, that is an area where there's still opportunity without increasing a lot of the costs.
Right. Anyone wanting to make a motion for approval?
Actually, we do have one question from the public, if you can, if we may.
Yeah.
And that was a question about how the smaller unit discount would be calculated. Could you walk us through?
Sure. So on a smaller unit, so something below the seventeen hundred and fifty square feet would be multiplied, it would be the proportionate size of all impact fees, except for the storm drainage facilities, would be whatever percentage of seventeen hundred and fifty square feet you are. So if you were, you know, fifteen hundred square feet, it's fifteen hundred divided by seventeen hundred times whatever the impact fees are for everything but storm drainage. Because storm drainage is already being done on impervious surface, it's kind of a separate item, but everything else would be discounted based on the proportionate size of the unit versus that seventeen hundred and fifty square foot mark.
So, and and Nick, just doing a quick, sorry, just doing a quick calculation on that. For so, so for a single family home, if you take out the stormwater facility fee, it's thirty nine thousand nine hundred eighty two dollars. You divide that by seventeen fifty square feet, you get twenty two dollars and eighty four, eighty five cents a square foot. So if you're two square feet under the seventeen fifty, you'd get a twenty two point eighty, twenty two dollar eighty four, eighty five cents times two, so you'd get a what do you know, that is forty five dollars, just discount from that. Instead of smaller, the home you build, you're not paying, you know, you get another two, twenty two dollar eighty five cent credit for each square foot's below one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Sorry about that, I hit the wrong button, I was trying to hit my.
Did that answer your question, Kim? Sounds like it's good news.
Yeah.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the resolution and forward this on to the city council.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay, and one before before vote for any discussion, potential amended motion, was there any direction on the stormwater fee? And we can always just kick that up to council, too, but I'm sure they'd appreciate any recommendations.
Yeah, and then the the minimum square footage for expansion, is that any of those?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, if there's any, if there's any input online.
So a hundred and fifty, does anybody have alternate proposal?
That's fine. So over over a hundred and fifty square feet, they have to pay the
Okay.
impervious surface.
Agreed.
Okay, I'll make a note.
All right, and Vice Chair Fritz, are you okay amending your motion to reflect that?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ottinger, are you okay? That's the second. Is that, okay, so we have an amended motion, which is adopting the resolution recommending the city council adopt the impact fees. And we will add in the the direction that stormwater facilities fee not be applied to construction a hundred and fifty square feet of us. All right, I will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Douche?
Yes.
Commissioner Lennon Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ottinger? Commissioner Ottinger, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Fritz?
Yes.
And Chair Fernandez?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much.
Okay.
And I will let you know when this does go to council. We will want a planning commission liaison, I believe we have it scheduled up through March. Although I can't recall who the representative is, it is on your schedule.
Okay, moving on to subcommittee updates. Climate Action Subcommittee.
Yeah, so the Climate Action Subcommittee had its first meeting, and the second one will be coming up tomorrow. The first one was pretty straightforward, just kind of introductions and getting a little bit of a sense of where everyone is at and procedures we are going to take. Tomorrow, we're going to be diving a little bit more into formation of task groups and just sort of developing the work plan for for the subcommittee. And I also have stepped up to be kind of a second co-vice chair. And and so we'll be helping in in the steering of that committee and also reporting back as much as possible. So if anyone has any questions on that, let me know. It's a really exciting group of people, and everybody's just thrilled to be getting it off the ground, so really excited for that and for all the hard work that staff has been putting in on that, and happy to answer any questions that might be coming up now. All right.
Okay. Item seven B, Zero Waste Subcommittee, appoint a planning commission liaison.
Thank you, Chair Fernandez, and I'll just give a brief overview, and then we can call for nominations. So our Zero Waste Subcommittee was established, I think about a a year and a half or two years ago. It is a city council standing subcommittee, similar to the Climate Action Subcommittee, and it looks at how to reduce waste and pollution in town, measures that we can encourage residents, businesses, and other agencies, including the city. And I can tell, I don't know if you've checked out the, who is on that? From the council, we have council member Slater and Vice Mayor Gurney, the city manager. Public Works Superintendent Dante De Frette is on, our engineering manager, who's I'm actually, I believe, that came up at council, because that's changing a little bit in terms of our liaison to that, was our engineering manager. And then there's one, about six community members, including a student representative, a couple of citizen representatives, a couple of commercial business owners, and someone from ecology. And so this is working with them in terms of things, what the city can do, and also, obviously, interactions with ecology and initiatives that they might be able to do as well.
What, yeah, how often do they meet? How often do they meet, and what would be required?
So they are just getting started to meet again. They actually did not meet at all during COVID. But they are getting meeting, I that's a good question, how often they meet. I think it's either once a month or once every two months.
Any questions? Any nominations or volunteers? Anybody of strong interest?
I would just say that I think it might be ideal to wait until we have a more full commission, especially with our new Commissioner Anderson here, just to see if if he has any interest in the position. So if everybody would be fine with continuance, I think that might be the best course of action, but I also want to hear direct response from if there's urgent need, if they're if they're meeting sometime soon as well.
I don't, I don't think it's urgent. This came up actually because the the, to get into the details of it, the the city has a representative to the Waste Agency Management that has been our engineering manager, Henry Micus, as maybe may, he recently retired. And so at the December meeting, city council appointed a council member to be that rep to the Waste Management Agency until until things settled out in the engineering department. And then they realized, oh, wait, that means we have three P, three council members on a subcommittee, we can't do that, that's a quorum. So they looked at it at their last either one or two meetings ago, or two meetings ago, I think, at this point. And so, okay, wait, they sort of restructured themselves in terms of the representative. And so, okay, wait, they sort of restructured themselves in terms of the representatives to the Zero Waste Committee, but then they also felt, hey, you know, I think at that point, the Climate Action Subcommittee had met for the first time. And they kind of realized how critical and nice it would be to have a planning commission representative to the to this committee as well. And so that's when they they reformatted their own representatives to the subcommittee, but then they also asked the planning commission to appoint a member as well.
And is it to do with this meeting important or would it?
Sorry, thank you, thank you, Chair Fernandez. No, I don't, I don't, I think it's fine to wait till the next meeting, I don't think there's an imminent meeting scheduled. I can check with city management in terms of, I bring it back to the next meeting, the check with the management, when, how often they meet. This is just one of the few subcommittees that the planning department doesn't staff. Since it's, you know, the engineering part of it is the waste management side of things. And then, yeah, how often they meet and when their next anticipated meeting is, I can certainly bring that back at the next meeting.
Yeah, just some general information, so people can kind of think about it for the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay. Let's see, Planning Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair Fernandez. Oh, and actually, I do want to do one other subcommittee report, just so, I I can do it under my planning director, but it doesn't matter since I'm talking about it, I guess. The Ives Park Subcommittee is sending a representative to the Public Art Committee next week at many of you may recall, at the last meeting, we were talking about Ives Park and improvements there, the the idea of beautification, whether it be mural on the pool wall or some other things within the park, potentially in conjunction with the Public Art Committee was raised, and that subcommittee has looked at things a little further. And so they're sending a representative to meet and have just an open discussion with the Public Art Committee at their meeting next Wednesday at ten thirty. And we're also meeting with that, I'm meeting with that Subcommittee on Ives Park next Wednesday morning as well. And then they are planning to bring a report back at the next planning commission meeting of some of their discussions that they've been having. And so the Stream Subcommittee will also plan a direct report, so.
Just ask, yeah, question, as long as we're on that subject. So I'm I'm the alternate to the Park Subcommittee and was wondering, Luke, I know you, the committee's been having a hard time getting ahold of you or meeting, I'm just wondering if if you could let me know, or any of the committee members could let me know if they're not going to be able to attend, I'll try to maybe attend some meetings anyway as the alternate. I think that would be helpful to, you know, to continue our progress on that.
Thank you, Chair Fernandez. So for my official report on what has been happening in the city, I'll say, first of all, the obviously, there must have been no shelter in place, regional order has been lifted by the governor, so we are allowed to have outdoor dining again, which means that we have, our parklets are now able to be used for outdoor activities, and so we'll be sort of working to repopulate those. We also got a request in December from a business owner, a ramming gajin owners, to do a fourth parklet just off of the plaza in the walking area, just to the southwest of the parking aisles there, there's a bit of pedestrian area that's not in a walkway, and the council approved that as a fourth public parklet, so it will be done the same way as the other parklets where it's open to anyone's use, but it's being sponsored by Ramen Gajin. And so that will be a new parklet that will be going up, and I notified them today that the lifting of the shelter in place order, they can go ahead and get that started. I would expect they'll probably wait till after this rainstorm, which is supposed to be somewhat significant. So do look for that in the coming week or so.
Sorry, on the parklets. Some mention was made of, I guess, you know, I know it's public space, but are any plans to add any kind of covering, whether it's umbrellas, or I know that, what is it, three quarters, one quarter has to be open?
Fifty percent.
And I know we talked, you know, for the businesses, it's kind of tough with all the other expenses, I'm just wondering if anything's been brought up with that.
So we are leaving this to the business owners that have adopted them. And I know, I don't know, Chair Fritz, if you have anything for it to report, if you've been, I know you've done some coordination, but that sort of got interrupted by the regional shelter order.
Well, I know, like, I know, I know Mimi's has some tent structures that they put up. Sometimes they kind of come and go, they put those up, and I know no, People's Music was looking for some kind of shade structure, I I don't know where they are in their search. And I know Sunshine Cafe has been, you know, I saw today, again, they put their table back out in the parklet with umbrella on it. Yeah, I think just individual people are doing it, I, we, you know, since the shelter in place order was lifted, we're gonna go and start, probably in a couple of weeks, building a platform for the one in front of Retrograde and Sunshine Cafe. Joe Maloney was kind of coordinating coordinating that, he helped build the one of People's Music, and so we're gonna build something similar at Retrograde, we're looking for some donated materials. So hopefully, in a couple of weeks, that parklet will also have a platform, so it's all kind of same level as the sidewalk, hopefully make it a little bit more usable. But yeah, that's, the kind of shelters are up to the individual, you know, people furnishing it basically.
Okay, and then moving on to recent meetings or items of interest on recent meetings. The last city, so the January fifth city council meeting, the council did hold a public hearing for the Benedict Car Wash. We had Chair Fernandez, there's the official planning commission liaison, but we also had a couple of the commissioners, Commissioner Ottinger and then Bush in attendance, so I think you all for your attendance, I think it's very helpful for council to hear. And I think they were appreciative of having, especially with the difficult hearing or difficult decision to to be able to hear from the commissioners. They did indicate, they didn't do any official action, but they did indicate after a lot of discussion that they're interested in, they took us to Strathole, and they are interested in improving the project and asked staff to work with the applicant and for us to look at the city attorney to draft conditions that address their concerns and your concerns about the noise impacts and the potential water overspray impacts from water. They also asked for some conditions related to mobile bus landscaping along the eastern boundary. And then they also indicated that they did want to make sure that those, that Abbott Avenue extension was not precluded by the project, and so we've been working with the applicant. We had a meeting with them today, and we've been, David and I have been working on revising those conditions and developing that to come back to council. That was continued to the date certain of February sixteenth. And so that is, there is a potential, because that's also when the mid mid-year budget hearing will be held. If the mid-year budget goes very long, it may get moved to the March second meeting, I'll know more about that next week. If it is, it will, that will be so noted on the February sixteenth city council agenda for anyone who's interested in in that. And I should know more about that later this week, how can I get it on the on the at the meeting, if you're interested. Send me an email, you can make sure you're kept abreast of that as well. Other items that the council's recently considered, they did hear and updated at the last meeting about the Sebastopol Inn, and I was at a staff level meeting with Mayor Glass and Councilmember Slater with the CDC, then the Hopkins and some others, the city management. And it is, so there are a couple of things on that, it has been renamed Alderberry Commons. And as of the end of, as of the meeting a couple of weeks ago, they had, it was about a third occupied with people, including some Sebastopol residents, so they did take to heart the comments about, we really want to make sure that, you know, folks in most counties in Sebastopol prioritize as much as possible to get housing in their community. And the police chief was also at that meeting, and he noted he had not gotten any calls as of the meeting related to the project. They, I know they did also have a meeting with business owners later that day. One, a couple of things to report, although there's, they won't be coming to the commission with a use permit, because obviously the county is not subject to regulations, they they have said that there's a couple of physical design changes like fencing at their courtyard and things like that, they're working on, and they have committed to going and meeting, showing that showing it to our DRB and going through our designer review board. So this is assuming such a permanent physical change in the community. Their long range plan, right now, DEMA, the I forget what DEMA stands for, but it's something emergency medical. Sorry, I apologize, I say too many acronyms. The the group that's basically the operators during this COVID time, they're basically medically trained people who are able to help help with the the medical needs of the population there. They are running the clinic right, running the housing right now. But long term, they are, the CDC will be transitioning it to permanent supportive housing. That's probably a two-year timeframe, obviously, really, the support for COVID vulnerable people needs to not be an issue anymore, and I would anticipate that's probably going to take a year. Just given what we've seen from vaccine rollout, so I'm not, you know, I can't put a number on it, but I think we've all kind of seen estimates of when the general population will be, vaccination schedules will be completed. And once that is done, they are going to go through and add kitchenettes to the units, so that as permanent supportive housing, the people have a little bit more independence. And so that will take some time. If, and as they're meeting with the adjoining business owners, they committed to, you know, involving staff as well, and I know I've been invited to, or they asked me if I wanted to be in the meeting with the business owners. There is a shared driveway and parking is is shared amongst both the Graveston Station site and the Alderberry Commons site, and so how that gets, if they want to undo that, it's a legal agreement between the parties, but the parking arrangements need to work for the city as well, and we need to make sure this access is being maintained and all that type of stuff. So that is, and and we'll be meeting with them on an ongoing basis as the project progresses to to help coordinate. And then also at the last city council meeting, they had a presentation about the T O T measure that is on going to be on the ballot, and I just got the ballot packet in the mail today, so, or my instructions, so I don't, I won't say that I'm an expert on that at all, but if you're interested, it's last week's city council meeting, if you go watch that. And then they also had a report from commission about the residence survey, and I'm sure many of you saw and hopefully critiqued. One of the things that came up from that was the, you know, people were, people did express that they were interested in engaging with the city and didn't quite know how. And also, there was sort of a discussion of the, the response to the survey was certainly weighted towards those who own homes and not renters, and so there is a a desire by the city to make sure that we're reaching out to renters and not just owners in the community. And with that, they've actually, for the upcoming agenda on this next Tuesday, a couple of items, one is our Public Art Committee has approved and recommended to council a revised location for the MedCon art piece. And that's due to a variety of factors. But it, that will be going to council next Tuesday. The location is actually proposed to be on the public works front lawn area right across from the entry to the community center and the youth sector. Taller structure, spire, kind of a column, which will be sort of a nice marker of the public facilities there and the animal park entries and things like that. So if you're interested in that, that will be on next week's agenda. The other request that council has asked is to have a discussion about the planning commission formation. And that is sort of the composition of the commission. One of the things they're looking at is, or one of the questions they would like to discuss is whether they should have two positions for the that allow people to be outside of city limits and then nine, five, four, seventeen zip code. And I think, I think, I don't know, part of that is related to the the commission survey and people wanting to be involved and wanting to be a little bit more flexible with that. I know, I wanted to bring up and let you all know about that in case you're interested in the meeting next week, but I know you've also had some discussions in the past about formations and your own thoughts, and so I wanted to provide, if any of you had questions or thoughts about that. And then lastly, before I forget, the designer review board has approved of the Net Street project, I can't recall if I reported on that at the last meeting. But that's the old round table building that was bought by the great deal, the Bill Group, and so hopefully look for construction on this spring.
I have a question for you. First off, just take this opportunity to apologize for being late to the meeting today. Sorry about that. Have you heard any more information from the Sebastopol Hotel folks? I think last time you gave us an update, they were hoping for a permit in the next few months, or about now, I would think. So do you have any update on that?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I I shouldn't have referenced it as the Alderberry Commons, that is their official rechristenings of that and instead of Sebastopol Inn. But yes, so that is a third, it's maybe about half occupied by now, I know they're continuing to move people in. And we, we, staff has not with them, with a couple of the council.
I was referring to the new hotel.
Oh, the Hotel Sebastopol, sorry. Thank you. Yeah, so I can report that they their building permit is ready, they've gone through that whole process, their financing is a little bit delayed, given the pandemic right now, but we had actually this last summer done a we, as in the planning and building department, brought to council a resolution having council extend all existing planning and planning entitlements and building permits that would otherwise expire for a period of one year. Because of the fallout from the the pandemic and just knowing that people were, they weren't the only ones who were having issues in delaying constructions, and we just wanted to support our, but our business community, and there were some residents who's also caught up in that. So, so that their, their use permit is still valid and will be so till next summer. Actually, till till next October, there is a potential we'll do another extension of that, just of all planning entitlements and building entitlements, we we left that open as we, when we brought the first resolution to council. Just based on what's going on, but, but I will say, we have, I have been in contact with the Hotel Sebastopol folks, and in fact, they contacted me about tonight's item to kind of ask some questions. You know, they were, obviously, their main question was, will this fee change impact us, and they were happy to hear that, no, they have a fee agreement that council has approved, a development agreement of council, so that locked in their fees from a, from that standpoint of it, so they certainly are looking to move forward the project, but their exact timeline is, I don't know at this point.
Thank you.
I have a question, Carrie.
Sure.
I'm, I'm wondering if you could send out an updated list of council liaison. I'm wondering if you could send out an updated list of council liaisons and, and the calendar. I have to say, I don't know where mine is right now.
Absolutely. Thank you. And, and I think, like I said, I think it only goes through March anyway, so I need to get on it and do it for the rest of the year. So that we, so that you have it for the full year. So yes, I will get that out. But in the meantime, I will check and make sure I let you know when yours.
Thank you so much.
Yours is, yeah.
I got a couple of comments, but if anyone else has questions. Okay, I just wanted to, with the, the commission survey, it was also discussed that the demographics weren't quite representative of the community and they were going to try to see if they could, you know, in the future, reach out to make that more representative of the, of our community. The, you know, speaking of commission, when they're talking about adding another person to represent outside of the city limits, I think it's probably, you know, a good idea, considering how many people are out there. I am wanting to talk to either council, I wanted to get feedback from the planning commission. I've always felt that, that the, having an alternate commissioner, so having eight on the commission, which oftentimes happens because everybody shows up, is kind of an unnecessary addition, kind of slows things down a little bit. In my 10 years of being on the planning commission, only once did we have a problem with, with that and it was just because of miscommunication. So, and, you know, I think I would suggest to be something maybe phased out. You know, so let's say there's two spots open for, for renew and one of the commissioners decide they don't want to, you know, apply for that, then they should just eliminate that one. And then, you know, either move the alternate over or figure that out. But so I want to get some feedback as to how the rest of you feel. I was hoping, I know that a previous alternate, his name is, at the moment.
Jerry?
Yes, after his term, he, he really suggested to, to the council that, that they shouldn't have that, that position. Because I, and I'm, I'm sure Kate probably feels the same way, you know, you can make comments and so forth, but you can't vote sometimes. And then also you couldn't be a chair or vice chair from that standpoint. So I'd be interested in getting any feedback from any of you on that. Yeah, great, Paul.
I agree. And I, every time there's positions open on the commission and you know, commissioners aren't reapplying to the position, I always suggest to the city council that they start dropping commissioners' positions, just because I mean, the, the alternate position was actually created, I think, when I applied for my first term on the commission. And I'm pretty sure the reason that the alternate position was created, because there were two applicants for one position and they didn't want to say no to anybody.
And that was the third on there for, you know, so I know that's, yeah, that's, that was why it was created, which is.
So that was just kind of like, there wasn't really a need, it was just like, oh, you both are qualified, so why don't we just give you both a position and we'll make one of you an alternate.
Yeah.
So it was kind of the creation of the alternate was a little bit of a funny situation. And just, I mean, not, I mean, I love working with all of you guys, I think it's great, but, you know, we all know our meetings can drag on sometimes because there's eight of us that all want to, you know, give our feedback and we have a large commission for a small town. I'll just say, you know, I, I go in front of other planning commissions as an architect and five is pretty common. It's about, Santa Rosa has seven, but Santa Rosa also has 180,000 people in it. So, you know, not too many other cities in the county, even the county, the county only has five planning commissioners for the entire county. So it, it seems like a large number for, you know, 7,500 person community. So I would, I'm in favor of gradually kind of not only getting rid of the alternate, but maybe getting us down to five commissioners at some point, you know. And not just like randomly axing people, but you know, you know, due to over time, I think, I think it's not undesirable. And I'm not, I don't have a strong opinion about the extra person from outside of Sebastopol. I mean, they are technically represented in the county, you know, that our county planning commissioners and issues that happen in the county. And we, as residents of Sebastopol, don't often get to say what happens outside of our city limits. So I kind of think like, not that I'm trying to exclude anyone, but, you know, I mean, obviously they, people in West County interact with Sebastopol a lot, vice versa, we interact with the county a lot, the county often ignores anything we have to say about what happens outside of Sebastopol, so.
Although, I'll just interrupt you because I believe there is a position for the district five representative to, I believe it's the the bicycle committee. So if anyone knows anyone who's interested in that, let me know and I will pass that information on. Because it's people from the city are in the fifth district and we are actually able to serve on county committees, so.
I might be interested if you want to contact me on that.
I have a parliamentary inquiry right now. I'm wondering what's the best way of forwarding on our, our concerns and preferences regarding, you know, the planning commission makeup and just don't want us to get into a, you know, a Brown Act that we have an agenda for this.
Right.
And is it urgent that we take care of this right now? But, or can we put it on our next?
Yeah, we're not, we're not taking any action. I think I was just asking for opinions. And then maybe I might come back as an, as an agenda item, but I'm just kind of curious just to see what the opinions on that.
Yeah, so, and, and thank you Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Fernandez. The, the council agenda setting committee has requested that this be on their February second meeting. So I'm 75% of the way done writing a staff report that I was about to do earlier this week. And, and I just read in my mind now, hey, you know, A, not only do I want to report to you, an item of interest to you coming to the, to the council in case you wanted to express any opinions or attend the meeting and speak as another republic slash commission. Yes, we can't take any official action and I'm not asking for that tonight, but I do, I did have a sense and I kind of remembered Vice Chair Fritz and Commissioner Fernandez having conversations with them previously about this. And so I think it's okay to express, I'll be, I'll be, it's helping me structure my staff report with various options to the, to the city council. But there won't be any formal recommendation from the planning commission unless, of course, I can always put that in as an option of, you know, ask the commission for their formal recommendation on it, in which case it would come back to you.
And Paul, just on your, on your comment, I would certainly have a different opinion if there were only five commissioners and two of them were from outside. So that's a different situation, so.
Yeah, I would, I would add that another way of thinking about the commissioners from out of town is still having a requirement that they have our business owner, which is the situation I am in. So maybe instead of having a, an open, someone from out of the city limits, have, I think it's important to have that connection to the business of the city. So I think that might be a way of, of increasing the potential candidates, but also keeping the, the emphasis and focus in the right, in the right place. And then I would just, I would just say that I concur, that the manner in which we, the, the commission has expanded was, was a little peculiar. And at the time, there was some pushback, I think it's fair to say that we, we, the commission at the time felt slightly as though it was a solution looking for a problem. And, and I think it's proved, that proved to be, it's a hard position to be an alternate from the seven other people. I'm sorry, I, I concur with the opinions on that.
Thanks. And yeah, and so just to clarify, yes, you're correct, Commissioner Dabbs, thank you for that. The, the governing resolution in our municipal code allows for, states it to be seven members, which can vary in size by resolution of the council, but can't be less than five. So they can always pass a resolution for that. And those, and then one alternate may be appointed, so that isn't a requirement and there's no change to our code should they want, you know, they have to just phase that out as, as, if they ever wanted to. The eligibility for the commission, yes, you're correct. There's one seat for nine, five, for someone who lives outside of city limits and, but in the zip code and Commissioner Ottinger is or appointee to that position currently. The other eligibility criteria is if you own a business in the city, so that is and, and I know one of the things I'm thinking about is if it is, if they do like to do a second person outside of nine, five, four, seven, two. Again, it doesn't require them to, it just allows them to sort of like, they can appoint an alternate, it doesn't require them to. And then one of the things that I would wonder is if, if someone, you know, Zach, say you own a business in town, but you live outside of town, but you sell your business shares and I'm technically an employee. You're still involved and engaged with the community, but you live outside of town, but in the zip code. You know, would you be able to still be eligible? Ask that. And so, so there's a few things that the council would be considering, I would imagine, on this topic.
Commissioner Ottinger, I know you had a comment you want to make.
Yes, my only thought, I can see eliminating the alternate. My concern about going to five is that sometimes, because we're a small town, a lot of people live within the area of a project that they're considering. And I can see some people needing to recuse themselves. I think that can happen on the council as well. It was just a thought that seems to make sense for a small town.
I'm happy to go. So I agree with everybody about the, the alternate situation. I believe there's a designer review board alternate opening that is, I don't know if any applicants have applied for it because I don't know if anyone wants to be an alternate on the designer, you know, just to kind of goes into the, who, who really, you know, has the drive to, you know, put in the time and, and, you know, be an alternate and not be able to vote. So I agree, doing away the alternate position in a phased approach probably makes the most sense. I'm not really wedded to the idea of five or seven or the inclusion of another person from outside of town. I would add as a point on the, the business ownership exception, maybe expanding that to, you know, if there's someone who takes the bus into downtown and works a minimum wage, full-time job, I think they should be just as eligible as someone who owns a business. So at that point, it might open up a can of worms of, you know, how, how are we going to otherwise define this? But I think there are some equity considerations to take into mind if we, if we are going to be making exceptions to residency, the most standard metric, what else would that look like? And I also just want to draw some attention to the, the composition of the climate action subcommittee, which, you know, as I mentioned, is, is a group that I'm really impressed with. I think it's more than half people who live outside of the city of Sebastopol and are willing to show up and put in the time for our community because they're part of our community. And I, I just, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunity for community engagement for people who live outside of city limits to, to be part of the city and we should open and welcome that. I, I don't necessarily think adding a ninth position on the planning commission is the best way to do it. It might provide some political cover to council, but I hope we're, we're looking for more than that. And I, I think another model we can look at that's really effective in district five is Supervisor Hopkins has really expanded the MAC program or the municipal advisory committees. And I know some members of the nine, five, four, seven, two zip code have felt that they, you know, don't necessarily have the same process, some as their, you know, they might not be in a MAC and they might also not be in the city of Sebastopol. So maybe there's some way the city can work with Supervisor Hopkins' office to have kind of a regional advisory committee, if that's something the council's interested. Again, not, not urging any action, but just thinking out loud here on some ways that we can address the, the clear interest and potential need to be engaging more of our community.
Anyone else? Okay.
I should weigh in.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda. Yeah, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
I just, my concern was we're be wandering down a Brown Act violation. So, but if you want my, my comments about it, I'm, I don't feel we need an alternate. I'm fine with the current makeup with one in the nine, five, four, seven, two, which brings in a community member. And then I'm fine with keeping it that if you own a business in town. And so that's my words.
We got everyone's comments.
Are there any questions on any of the other, or comments on any of the other topics that are raised in my report?
I do want to make one correction. And that is, I mentioned of being, being alternate on the park committee and showing up to the meeting. I can't do that because that would be four commissioners. So there can only be three.
Correct. And so you would need to coordinate if someone is not going to be at a meeting and need to coordinate so you know that you should show up.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, exactly.
I just want to clarify too, I didn't, just due to Brown Act, I didn't know if I could even let you know, Sheriff Fernandez, just because we were getting to a point that way. So that was part of the reason why I didn't reach out to you.
Yeah, and I think if it's to discussion, I think you have to, I guess that's a kind of a touchy subject, what we talked about. But if it's like, hey, I can't be there, yeah, and actually I wouldn't know exactly how an alternate would handle that, but just simply I would have to, I guess, show up and then I guess I'd have to be filled in, but now there would be four people that would know, so I don't know how that's technically.
Yes, that could be a serial meeting and so we should talk about whether or not, how, how we're structuring it.
Right.
So Everett and Luke, I don't know if you want to talk together and let me know.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, because if it's a, if it's a, if it's a different topic, then that's fine. But if it's the same topic, it would be a serial meeting, so that would not be, you'd not be able to do that.
All right. Well, thank you for everyone's time and Director Swanson, thank you for all your work as usual and all your staff.
And just in terms of upcoming meetings, we are anticipating having meetings as scheduled for the foreseeable at least. So just so you know, thank you for the brief, I did have a two vacation and it was nice, it was nice over Christmas, I realized that impacted the, the first meeting of the year.
Is there anything of significance down the pike we should?
So in terms of the sort of pipeline projects, yeah, there are a couple of things. One is the Humpy Square project, the 10 unit mini town home. They have, they had submitted a while back and were incomplete. They, I believe they resubmitted, so that will be coming to the commission when they are ready. They do need to, they're proposing a planned community, so it will need to go to the designer review board for the recommendation on that component before it comes into the commission. And then there is a potential for a preliminary review for, maybe you may recall the Barlow had a meeting about potentially doing some sort of housing in the Barlow. They had submitted, or they, they're working with staff to figure out what, how exactly to form their, you know, their request. And we suggested, since there are some significant policy considerations, that they do a preliminary review with both planning commission first and then city council. So that they could get initial feedback on what they, what they may be ultimately proposing. Those are the two main things. I know Headless Marketplace has submitted an amendment to add, I believe, an additional day on the weekends they do their market, but so that'll be, that's the opener market in the Barlow. And then Fern Bar over in the Barlow is also looking to do an expansion, so it'll be a amendment to their use permit. So there's a few projects trickling around and making their way to you, to you all.
Hopefully many more coming.
Can I ask?
Sorry, go ahead.
What's happening with the hotel in the Barlow?
They are not proposing a hotel at this point.
Okay.
That was, they had an application a long time ago. They had briefly submitted, but the logistics for that, they had actually submitted, I think originally a long time before I got here and then at where Seismic Brewing ended up going. And I don't know much about that because it was several years before I started. They did briefly submit a, for a hotel slash residential. But there are a lot of technical issues with that, that they, and then obviously the, the funding for hotels, the financing for hotels is basically dried up. So they are looking at if they could do something that was purely residential or residential and commercial. And we're working with them with what they're, what it is they're actually asking, so there's sort of a clear question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We good?
I believe so, and I will be, whoever is the liaison for February, I will be contacting you about. Next Tuesday's meeting in terms of, and obviously you're all welcome to attend as I noted, but I just want to make sure we have at least one commissioner there to. If the council has questions.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, officially adjourn the meeting, see you guys at the next one.